I call the meeting to order. This is the March 17th special meeting of the Hoboken Board of Education. Mr. Moffett, you want to read the statement of compliance, please?
Yes. This meeting is held in conformity to the Open Publics Meeting Act. Proper public notice of this meeting was published in the local newspapers on March 5, 6, 12, and 13 of 2006. I would like to mention as a little departure, in the afternoon of March 14th, it was brought to our attention that the public notice of the special meeting to adopt this budget ran on March 5, 6, 12, and 13 in the Jersey Journal and Hoboken Reporter contained an error. The notice correctly stated that the special meeting would take place on March 17th, but incorrectly noted that the date was Tuesday, not a Thursday. In response to this discovery, the following actions were taken in order to adequately notify the public of this mistake and correct it. First, we corrected, the corrected notice was published on the district website on March 14th. The corrected notice was posted on a district's official Facebook page on March 14th, 2016. Third, this notice was posted on a district's official Twitter account, also on March 14th. The correct notice was posted on the district's Board Doc site on March 14th, 2016. A notice was also delivered to the city clerk's office and posted on the afternoon of March 15th. On March 15th, we emailed the Hoboken Reporter and Jersey Journal to request corrections to the notice. A, the Hoboken Reporter posted a correction on their website on May, excuse me, on March 15th, 2016. And B, Jersey Journal printed a correction in their March 17th, 2016 paper. And lastly, the corrected notice was posted at the entrance and on the notice boards of all district schools, which include Brant, Calabro, Connors, Wallace, and Hoboken Junior, Senior High School, and at the district administrative offices here at the Demerus Building on March 15th, 2016. Additionally, please note that this meeting day and date were announced by the Board President Tom Clubfeld during the March 8th, 2016 Board of Ed meeting, which was repeated on cable television channel 40, I'm sorry, channel 77 and Fios channel 46. The full meeting recording was also available on YouTube and Board Docs since March 10th, 2016. And the notice of the special meeting has been posted on the Hoboken Board Docs homepage since around March 8th, 2016. With that said, I'll continue with the statement of compliance. If any other board member or member of the general public in attendance believes that this meeting is a violation of Open Meetings Act, the Hoboken Board of Education requests that they make a statement at this time. The Board wishes to make those in attendance aware that this meeting is being recorded on video and will be broadcast by the Board at a later date on cable television channel 77 and Fios channel 46. The full meeting recording will also be made on Board Docs, which can be accessed through the district homepage. The Hoboken Board of Education is committed to preserving the decorum of the public process and is mindful that we live in the electronic age of computers, cell phones, and other electronic communication devices. Nevertheless, we respectfully request that all meeting participants kindly silence their electronic devices during the course of this meeting, and if use of the device is necessary, we ask that you please leave the meeting room if you need to conduct personal business. If you could please rise at this point for this salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call rolls, please. Mr. President?
Here.
Ms. Angley?
Here.
Mr. Biancamano?
Present.
Ms. Evans?
Here.
Dr. Gold?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Montgomery?
Here.
Ms. Soboloff?
Here.
And Mr. Clubfeld?
Here. Before we begin, on behalf of the Hoboken Board of Education, I want to extend our heartfelt condolences to former board member and President Rosemary Markle on the loss of her husband, Bill, this week. We keep Rose and her children, Zach and Alicia, in our hearts at this sad time. And then we would have reports. Today is the adoption of the budget, and as I've said in two previous meetings, we're not approving the budget tonight. The budget is being presented by the administration to the Board and in turn then to the public for our deliberation and consideration. And we will have a budget hearing then on May 3rd, so we have several weeks to be looking over this. I think tonight, we're going to get a brief presentation, and then the presentation of the temporary budget. So, Dr. Johnson or Mr. Moffett?
Right, I think the superintendent has one.
Okay, so I'll just provide an opening statement regarding the 2016-2017 budget. The 2016-2017 budget for the Hoboken School District at New Jersey's mandated 2% tax levy cap maintains our current staffing, academic, co-curricular, extracurricular programs as well. Working closely with building administrators and the business office, together we assessed every aspect of the 2015-2016 budget to see how we were going to ensure that all of our new initiatives for curriculum, technology, instruction, staff development, and enrichment or support programs could be integrated within that 2%. Together, we also looked at our entire staffing footprint in the district to determine how we could creatively reorganize in order to achieve the goal of increased support and connectivity with students and parents while enhancing overall operational efficiencies and professional growth. This task proved to be somewhat challenging, operating within a 2% tax levy cap equated to the ability to increase our budget by $820,000, just a little over $820,000. We were notified that $629,605 of that total amount would be allocated to tuition growth for our charter schools in town. This means that the district would have to operate with a 0.46% tax levy or the ability to grow our budget via tax levy of an amount at $190,487. This amount of money, $190,487, would be inclusive of salary increases, benefit increases, energy and other operating expense increases in the district as well. We are presenting, we were, as we were presenting that particular budget, which includes a curriculum overhaul project in the areas of science and social studies, a full revision to English language arts, including the integration of core novels and an extensive writing portfolio system, a brand-new STEM program, newly created enrichment and gifted and talented approaches, and a newly defined RTI team and administrative structure, we knew that we would still have some challenges. One component of the budget process that we were waiting on, and the business administrator was able to identify within the last couple of weeks, was something called an enrollment growth adjustment. As a district, we are actually proud to indicate that the state is recognizing our own growing enrollment district-wide and is allowing for an adjustment to deal with that enrollment growth. This ability enables the district to deal with the growth of what the state is projecting 99 students, although it looks to us that we are anticipating somewhere closer to 137 new students in the district next year. However, the enrollment adjustment, growth adjustment, equates to a total of $725,466 or the ability to grow the tax levy an additional 1.77% over the 2% cap legally. Combining this information along with the apparent need of the 7th and 8th grade needing to be increased from four to five sections at each grade level, and the real need of additional teachers in the district, this enrollment growth adjustment allows us to do exactly what we need educationally to ensure optimal class sizes and effective academic operations. This adjustment also enables the district to meet the growing demands of our junior and senior high school students by introducing the college and careers program at the high school, including opportunity paths in biomedical sciences, computer science, and engineering. So with that being said, Mr. Moffett, our business administrator, is going to provide you with an assessment and an overview of the proposed 2016-2017 budget and walk you through all of those numbers.
Thank you. Your action tonight is to adopt the tentative budget. Again, it's a preliminary budget, which means it is subject to change. It is going to be submitted after tonight's vote to the county office. They will review it. They could ask for various changes, which would change some of the detailed information. So that is my disclaimer at this point, is that all information shared. All information shared tonight is subject to change, and it may change after and before the county approval. The presentation, just an overview at this stage, we'll be talking a little bit about overviews of macro concerns. We'll talk about enrollment, charter school increases. We'll talk about department goals, overall appropriations. We'll touch on debt service, revenue projections, and we'll end on some fund balance information. But I'd like to extend this out of a meeting that we had in January when Mr. Dita Lurch was here and spoke about our financial position and how it was improved, and that is something that we were preparing to utilize as we go into this budget period, so it's an extension of improving the district's overall financial position. So, you know, what does that mean? It means that we were able to build our maintenance and resources for our capital projects, so we were able to build those to address some of our antiquated, I'll say, our older spaces and buildings. We were able to eliminate the food service deficit, brought in basically some additional resources for that, as well as improving, I'll say, operations within this school year. So that was all encouraging by the time we hit January. We also were able to increase our general operating surplus to about 2%. And we were also, we made significant progress on weaning the district away from a dependence on using fund balance for future years' budgets. So those are the things that I was given as a goal when I first came to the district, and it was very encouraging to hear Mr. Lurch speak about that and identify that we did have an improved financial position, because that all relates back to how you enter into the budget planning phase, which is really starts in January, prior to January. We meet with various units, we get financial information ready, and we wait for the financial reports, as well as information from the Department of Education. So what were some of the things that we were looking at in January that we're going to open up as we move forward? We were concerned about looking at flat state aid. We were concerned if it was going to be flat, if it was going to be increased, but we were thinking it was probably going to be flat. We also knew that there was a good chance that we were going to see a pretty hefty increase in the charter school transfer. We were predicting about $500,000, but as the superintendent just mentioned, it came in at about $629,605. We knew we were going into a negotiation period with the two major units we have, the administrators and the teachers, so we knew we were coming up on that. And we also knew that we were going to have increased health costs. So again, those are some of the things that went into this overall budget process in, I'll say, January, February. So, as I spoke before, a lot of people say, you know, they heard this before, but it's all about a cycle, and what we do is we just continue building the budget and monitoring the budget throughout the year. So we're constantly looking at spending trends as it relates to what was submitted by various units. We look at other trends that indicate area of growth or decline, where there are potential areas of savings, so we look at those. So again, we sat, we talked with various principals, department heads of facility, technology, obviously the superintendent, and other stakeholders within the district, which covered pretty much the gamut of our operations. Another thing that we had to concern ourselves with is this continuation of what is, what we were formerly called an Abbott district, so there are certain structural elements of our budget when we create it, which includes what they call a school-based budgeting process, which divides up our general fund into two sections. One is the general fund, and the other is school-based budgets. That's Fund 15, so that complicates the information somewhat. We deal with some mandated requirements from the Department of Education, which includes parent activities, after-school programs, kindergarten requirements. We also deal with a program that's somewhat unique to former Abbott districts, which is the preschool program, and we also deal with the agency, basically the School Development Authority, which is responsible for approving and building out some of our building and our spaces, our capital projects. So after that, we conducted a study of our enrollment, and I used that data to then feed into our budget system. I could tell you that we are projecting about 69 total students, which represents about a 2.72 increase from year to year. Majority of those students will be in the primary grades. Kindergarten represents about 23 new students, and elementary, which is 1 through 6, I'm sorry, 1 through 5, which is roughly about 40 kids, so that brings us to 63. And there's a slight loss at the upper grades, about six, which brings to about 57 total out of the regular ed population, and we have a category called ungraded, which is mainly special education. That's another 12 students, so that'll bring you to 69. Another big area when we're doing our enrollment, as we indicated, charter schools, we knew it was going to be a big part of that budget process this year. So when the state aid was released, one of the first pages I went to look for was obviously the charter school and state aid amounts. So state aid was relatively flat, which we saw, and then we found that the charter schools were a little bit more than we had anticipated. So quick analysis indicates that based on 15-16, we have a total enrollment at the charter schools of about 726 students, and they are now projected by the Department of Education. Again, remember, the Department of Education calculates this for us and provides this data to us. We're required to place this into the budget. If it does not match the notice, the county office will not approve our budget. But the projected amount for 16-17, as per DOE, was 772 students, which is an increase of 46, roughly 46 students, majority of them at Ola, which represents about a 44 number of students, and Elysian represented about five. And there were some net adjustments for other charter schools that were not as large as the main three. Hoboken Charter School was relatively flat as far as enrollment. Now, what does increased enrollment mean for our total payment? So payment in 15-16 was $8,643,879, an increase in 16-17 on a projected basis of $9,273,484. So that represents a growth roughly of 7.28%. So you can see right there that that 600 outpaces what the 2% growth would factor in, so it's disproportionate growth vis-à-vis the 2% cap. So beyond that, I mean, why is it important for planning, and I'll just remind the district here, specifically the Board, if I look back at 2007, 2008, our total transfer to charter schools was about $2.8 million, and like I said, this year in 16-7, it's 9. almost 3 million, which represents a 230% increase for that time period. That's why it's important. And like I had mentioned, after that, we went back through the various goals of our schools, special education, technology, security areas, we wanted to maintain the security area, facilities, we revisited our facilities. And we looked at our food service deficit elimination plan, which we spent a lot of time on, as I mentioned at the beginning. This was one of those areas that we wanted to make some progress, and it is duly noted. Operations continue to improve. We've eliminated that deficit as of June 30, 2016, and we continue to reserve for that, but what we decided to do and what I recommend is reducing our reserve for that deficit from last year's 200,000. We'd like to reduce that to 50,000. I feel that the improved operations in food service will greatly reduce any type of accumulated deficit, and which could easily be not only offset by the 50, but even if it's a little bit more than 50, we do have surplus that would be available to cover and transfer. Now, what does this all mean as far as appropriations? What you see before you tonight, the total appropriations, and what I mean appropriations, I'm talking about mainly the general operating fund, which is our day-to-day activity. It, as you see, it's 55 million on your sheet that's attached to the resolution. It's 55,000,051,099 against last year's tentative amount, which was 53,466,416, which represents roughly a $1.6 million increase or a 2.9% increase. And I'll go into a little bit more as I go, but the main drivers of that are, again, is the charter school. You'll see some new staffing and programs, salary increments for a potential settlement of the contract, and health benefits. So those are the main drivers on the appropriation side. I'll speak at this point on what is new, some of the programs that we're adding and staffing that we're adding to this year's budget, which is 16-17 budget. So what is in? We have some, we have roughly six, what I call, full-time positions as teachers going into the junior, senior high school budget, which is again, that school-based budget. We have another three teachers going into the elementary schools. That's roughly 192,669, and I'll backtrack back to the high school group. So the six going into high school will cost the district on a projected basis of 385,338. And to continue on with new programs, we do have a new program, the CCC program and other initiatives going into the school-based budgets of roughly $300,000. So if you just group that all together, it's about $878,007. What didn't make it, some of the things that we talked about internally in central office, that we did consider some special education teachers, roughly three, but this whole conversation happened after an exhaustive review by the superintendent. She reviewed not only the staffing, but also the program offering, and I think that maybe sometime you'd like to comment on some of those.
I did. I looked at all of the staffing along with the principals, and the very interesting thing is we are in need of three additional elementary teachers as a result of the enrollment growth. That goes without saying. At the junior high school level, we are in need of additional staff members at the 7th and 8th grade level, because right now, the decision last year to keep the sections at four, and we're holding on the same number of students, our section sizes are ranging from 27 to 28 students in a class, and really should be broken into five sections as opposed to four. I do not believe and would not recommend that we operate one more year with four sections as opposed to five for many reasons. The one most important, academic reasons. It is challenging and difficult in the classrooms where those students are. They are small classrooms, and having anywhere from 27 to 28, and I believe one of the sections is 26, creates for an environment that is definitely not conducive to our academic and educational goals. At the same time, we have a couple positions at the high school, a couple gaps at the high school, which I knew about from the minute I came into the district. After having assessed the high school schedule in the summertime, we are operating this school year at the high school down some teachers. So while it may seem like the growth is predominantly at the elementary school level, unfortunately, the current existing condition created a situation where our staffing levels were down to begin with, and I certainly can't recommend that we continue to keep them where they are, that's for sure.
There are some other things that are in, and projects had to do basically with facilities. So these are from the operating budgets, so normal maintenance-type projects. We have, at the junior, senior high school, we have an HVAC project for about $7,200. Connors Elementary School, we have an HVAC project for $26,188. Back at the junior, senior high school, we have the pool ceiling replacement, that's $135,000. Wallace, it's an internal stairwell project, which is about $62,500. And then we have a district sidewalk repair program, which will cost about $100,000. Now, those are all the appropriations. What I will do is at least give you the information as far as the school-based budget. Again, this is an amount that consists of all the school-level resources that we have in this year's budget. That number is $23,575,800, which in general is about 43% of your overall operating budget. So again, just to reiterate, basically increase in appropriations, you'll see salary lines to accommodate the teachers and benefits, obviously to offset their benefit package. You'll see increase in supplies and material for the programs, and obviously for the district-wide, you'll see increases that are contractually based, as well on the charter school line. I do get questions about legal costs often, so I just wanted to let you know, it's the same level as we have last year, so we project to be basically flat. It's been pretty consistent the last couple of years I've been here. That number is $210,000, which will be budgeted for legal services. Now, I spoke about the facility projects, that's roughly $330,888. That's part of our capital outlay budget, which will be Fund 12. What you have to add to that will be the payment for our lease purchase agreement, and that was done a while ago, about, we're probably about four years in, on a lease agreement program. And originally, it was used to redo the lighting and other energy efficiency-type needs of the district. And that amount in total, which is interest plus principal payment, is $204,284. And our pre-K program, again, one of these programs that are related to the former Abbott district status, that pre-K program, which is for three- and four-year-old children, NCLB and IDEA, we're going to use the same levels that we've had last year. So our NCLB, I'll call it entitlement grant, is $1,076,225. The IDEA, which is also an entitlement grant specifically identified for students with special needs, is $660,286. So that kind of rounds out the whole appropriation side of it. I'm not going to jump into some of the revenue, which offsets this. And again, remember, the types of revenue that we see, we see local taxes, which is the general fund tax levy. We see formula aid, what I call state formula aid, which is used for our operating budget. It's unrestricted. We have a classification of restricted aid, both for the state, meaning from the state of New Jersey, which would include non-public textbooks, nursing, 192, 193, and technology. So those are the types of restricted state aid, which is mainly a flow-through amount. And then we have restricted aid from the federal, which, as I mentioned, with the NCLB and IDEA, they're considered to be restricted federal funds. So that's the main area that we generate revenue from. So I'll go over quickly that picture of revenue for 16-17. So the total tax levy right now, as proposed, is $42,502,765. We're looking at keeping tuition flat. We have a student that attends from another district, so that'll be about $28,693. We anticipate rent going up a little bit, about $553,683. We anticipate rent going up a little bit, about $553,683. Our miscellaneous revenue, we are going to use last year's amount, we think that's pretty close, $294,025. State aid, as I may have mentioned, is $10,784.36. I'll address a little bit of what the increase was from year to year in a minute. Federal aid in total is unrestricted is $196,367. And then the budgeted fund balance, which again is money from the prior budget, which means from the 1516 budget, which will go into the 1617 budget. So it's money that we have that we're going to offset the increase in taxes by that amount. So that's just about the same that we have this year, $691,530. So again, remember, it's taxes from prior, or I should say, previous fiscal years that will be used to balance this year's budget, which will reduce the pressure on the tax levy. And that equates to $55,000,051,099. And just so you all know, the percentage of overall operating revenue, the tax levy remains at about 77% of that total pot of money. And oddly enough, state aid is declining on a percentage basis. So they were about a little over 20%, and now they're about 19.6. So they're dropping. This is an outcome of the constant flat funding from Trenton, so that eight years finally can, will continue to eat away and cause the burden of education to be pushed over to the local tax, meaning the property tax. All right, so overview, so the general fund tax levy increased 3.65%. And how did that happen? 2% is our cap, 2% cap on tax levy, and an adjustment for enrollment growth. Now, I'll talk about enrollment growth in a minute. I'll just go through the picture real quick. When I talked about the increase in rent, that's about $86,777, which will be coming from increased number of classrooms that some providers will have at the preschool. So that'll generate that $86,000. And we'll have a slight decrease in some of the state aid in total, because when we project what they call extraordinary aid, that's a number we get very late in the year. So as a budgeting methodology, we do about 75% of what we received last year. So that causes basically a net reduction of $33,839. So moving on to the general tax levy to kind of work the numbers. So $42,502,765, which is the 1617 tax levy as proposed, against last year's number, which is the tax levy of $41,466, represents an increase of about $1.5 million, which is an increase of about 3.65. Again, the enrollment adjustment is something that is encouraging, because as the superintendent mentioned, it is finally catching up with us, the tremendous growth that we've had over the past five years. This isn't something that is calculated by any of the information I put into the budget. This is something that's driven by the Department of Education. What they do is they take five years' experience of our student information as submitted in ASSA, which is our October 15 count. They come up with a formula, then they weight that grouping, which comes up to a number that then flows into this adjustment, into tax levy adjustment. So as the superintendent has indicated, that overall adjustment was $725,566, indicating that we have about 99 students that will be increasing by and therefore adjusted the tax levy. Again, it is something that is very encouraging, because that is something that a lot of the districts of state of New Jersey were having issues with, being able to adjust your budget to keep up with enrollment growth. The downside is that adjustment is all on a tax, local tax side, not the state aid tax side, because the state aid hasn't really been run in the formulas, and they haven't really adjusted it for demographic changes in state of New Jersey. So they're putting additional pressure back on to the local tax levy and balancing the budget. So the good news, bad news story. Good news story is that it's going to be able to fund some of the areas that superintendent went on that are high priorities for the district to move forward and address some of the initiatives that will be rolling out in 1617. All right, now state aid, since I mentioned it, just to give you an idea, without extraordinary aid, it went from $10,656,560 in 1516, and it increased about $25,960 to a whopping So 10,682,520, which is our aid, again, that's 0.24% increase. I mean, it's $26,000. I mean, these are the type of increments we've been getting for the past few years, which doesn't really keep up with any of our salary, negotiated salary increments, the enrollment growth at the charter schools and the increase in their transfer amount. You could obviously see it's outpaced by all that growth. I'd like to end on the fund balance a little bit. We do estimate that our fund balance for the general fund is about $1,002,000. We're estimating $1,002,000 at the end of the budget period. And as I mentioned before, generating that will be the $691,530, which again is that amount that we're going to be using from surplus to offset increase for the 1617 budget. And that's all from the surplus. So what do we do next after this? Like I said, it does, after approval tonight, consideration approval, I'll then transmit the budget to the county office. It's due by Tuesday next week. I'll usually be notified by the county if there's any adjustments or further detail that they want. We'll make some of those adjustments so it's in an approvable format and therefore is subject to change, as I said at the very beginning. And obviously, if there's any issues that we need to deal with here at central offices or at the board level, we could then tweak it also. So it isn't a set in stone until we get to the point where it's the budget hearing, which is scheduled for May 3. That ends my quick overview. I'm sure there may be a few questions.
Then it would be appropriate to open up for questions or comments. Dr. Gold.
Three questions, really two. Our enrollment adjustment, does that include charter students?
Yes, it does include charter schools. When they look at the ASSA data that they utilize in their formula, it includes resident students and includes resident students that go to charter schools and therefore assist that formula in projecting that amount.
So they're giving us the right to raise local taxes to pay for the charter schools, essentially?
Correct.
Okay. It says here, local contributions for pre-K. Is that out of our taxes?
That is, that is a requirement that the Department of Ed has, and it represents the special ed need student that attend those classes. As you know, there's what they call a preschool disabled classification for young students. They recognize that, but they also recognize that it has to be incorporated into the preschool program. So the money from our general fund covers the special ed needs for those students.
Question, would we have to pay that if we did not have pre-K?
Yes.
Okay, so that's a funded mandate, that's a mandate that we fund out of our local, whether or not we had pre-K?
Correct.
Okay, good. And another thing, it might be some confusion, but the tax levy increase is not equivalent to the tax increase. So you have to understand, and we have to get from the city, what in fact the tax base is to see how much your taxes would go up base. So 3.65 is not a quotable figure for the tax increase. 3.65 is the budget increase of the Board of Education.
That's right.
And since I think 30% of your taxes are Board of Ed, and we don't yet know what the base is, there is no reason to say that your school taxes are going up 3.6%.
Right, correct. That is correct. Your tax bill for a taxpayer in Hoboken, we'll see various components. First component...
No, not, please. Let's take the 30% of our tax bill that's part of the total bill. Our total bill is, I think, 40% county, 37% city, and I'm making this up, but about 37% school. Now, I'm just talking about the school.
Just the school piece, right.
Since we don't know what the total tax rate is or the total basis, we can't say that the taxes are going up 3.65%. Or tell me I'm wrong.
Well, that's what I was trying to answer. If you're a taxpayer and you get your bill, like in the mail, you pull it out of your mailbox, and you'll see the overall tax bill, it'd be three components, like you rightly said, the school tax, municipal tax, city tax, and county tax. We only speak for our component, so it's a 3.65.
I'm going to say this again, because I feel you're not listening.
Okay.
Suppose we had a number of more ratables. Suppose we have a lot more ratables in Hoboken. Because of that, your taxes would not go at 3.6%. What would happen is that we have to account for 3.6% of our school budget. That's not the same thing as saying your taxes, school part of the taxes, is going up 3.65%. I mean, tell me I'm wrong, but my understanding is, how much our taxes are going to go up for that percentage is depending on what the total taxable base is when the tax rate is determined. And the only reason I'm making a big deal about this is that I don't want people saying your taxes, school taxes, are going up 3.65% if in fact that's not the case. What we're always saying is that our budgeting for our school budget is going up 3.6%. And am I right? Am I wrong?
Your tax levy to balance the budget is 3.65%.
Yes, but that doesn't mean your tax bill, the piece of paper you get, is going to go up 3.65%.
No, because it really has more to do with the fact that it's over a two-year period, a straddled year than it does the way you're approaching it from a tax basis.
I'm approaching it from a taxpayer who wants to know how much his taxes are going up.
We can't predict what that will be.
But you can predict it if you know what your total basis.
No. You can't predict that, because we would not know what that total basis. So as a result of that, yes.
You're agreeing with each other.
In the Hoboken reporter, if it says your taxes are going up 3.65% of your school budget, that's incorrect. That's the point.
I think right now, we're saying that the tax levy is going up 3.65%, but no one's saying what your taxes are going up.
That's the point I want to get across.
I think at our May meeting, if I remember last year, we had some example, if the average home costs this, this is what you could expect your tax bill to go up by.
Exactly.
I like simple examples. And if this was last year's budget, and this is this year's budget, that's gone up 3.65%, the overall budget. Now, if we each had a share of that, we would have paid X number of dollars. If five more people sat at the table tonight, we would divide that new amount over...
And that's the simple point I'm trying to get across.
So if the tax rate, and if the ratables have increased...
Goes up, our tax, the tax levies, but the amount you're going to pay will go down. Or if we get less taxes in, our taxes are going to go up. But the relationship between your tax levy and your actual tax bill is not necessarily one-to-one.
I think we also have to know that we are not talking about the overall increase of the budget. The overall increase of the budget, we are not, that is not the 3.65%. The 3.65% is the amount to be raised in taxes. It is not the overall budget.
I'm sorry, I missed the point.
Right.
So it's not the 42 million, it's not at the 16.5, right. Okay.
Okay. Quick question on, just to bring it around on that a little bit, since my first budget. And now, I might have got a little confused with what you just said, the superintendent charged you. All right, so we're not looking to raise the budget 3.65%. We're not looking, our budget isn't going up, is it?
No, the tax levy portion, to support the budget, goes up 3.65.
Yes, to support it, okay. And to piggyback on that, if there were more houses built, but they gave them those deals where they only take the city taxes or whatever, the abatements, we would be hurt by that. So we don't know whatever the city's doing also. So if the city had buildings built this year, and they do those tax abatements where they don't put us involved, so they don't take any taxes out of that for the schools or the county, that hurts us also, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Questions on this side?
I just have a comment. It seems like a lot of work has gone into this, in that obviously you've found gaps that are, existing gaps that you're trying to rectify and putting new programs in place. It's unfortunate that our state aid is flat and that the increases fall on our local taxpayers. But, you know, I'm sure I'll have questions between now and the May meeting, so thank you.
Mr. President, if I may?
Please.
Mr. Moffett, since you brought up Mr. Lurch and his audtor port in January, he stood at the microphone and he said that we had a $5.4 million in fund balance, and I thought it was a surplus. Then you quickly corrected me and said, no, it wasn't. Our surplus is only about $1.5 million, so on and so forth. You're carrying over $691,000 from last year's budget of that surplus. I know a lot of things can happen between now and May 3, but if we were to pass this budget as is, as you presented it tonight on May 3, how much of a surplus would we have left?
Right now, the operating, we're planning on having an operating, which is the 2% surplus piece, that overall picture you said, about $1.2 million that we're going to have.
So we're still going to have $1.2 million in surplus if we pass the budget as is here?
Operating surplus, yes.
So, and what was the difference between your number of 1.5 and Mr. Lurch's number of 5.4 again?
Well, it was reconciling items, and some of that was going in different places. Some of it actually is identified as part of that 691. Because if you remember, he had mentioned 437 of that, that off of that sheet was going into next year's budget, and that is part of that 691. Not to confuse you, but it can be that confusing because they're reconciling. And there's also deposits in the past that were made to the maintenance budget, I'm sorry, the maintenance reserve and the capital projects reserve. So that's all part of that.
Okay. All right, I look forward to working with you in the next few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The solo?
Yeah, I think the solo, right.
I don't think you're on, Irene. Hello?
Hello? Just to kind of, with Leon, I think that people see, we're certainly the most visible Board of Ed, right? We passed this budget, we have a special meeting, and people head right to the 3.65, and they, I think they have the reaction that Leon's talking about, oh, our taxes are going up at 3.65. And so I understand what Leon's trying to say, that the school portion of the total tax bill is actually very small, I think even for other communities in New Jersey. I think it's between 25 and 30%. But also, I think that people don't understand is that this tax levy increase, the 3.65, is for all four districts. And I think that's really important for people to understand, that the tax levy increase, since charter schools are paid for almost exclusively by the local tax levy, that's what we're talking about. We're talking about the local tax levy. So that 3.65 encompasses their needs. They get paid first, so we get a bill from the DOE, and then whatever our needs are and what we can put together. So I just wanted to mention that, because I think that's confusing to a lot of people. And then with Peter's question, I had a question about that too, because we've been talking a lot about different things, like the Wallace Gym and JFK Stadium and all these things. And I think those things are coming out of that maintenance and capital reserve, right? Is that true?
Yes, that is correct.
Because I've heard that question before, that we have some kind of, you know, 5.4 million, like it's some kind of pile that we're holding on to, but it's, my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that it's prudent to hold a 2% surplus. I think that that's just good business. And then I'm glad that we have those reserves, because those facilities need upgrading. So I think that some of those things are coming out of that. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I could add a little bit, if I could elaborate. On that 2%, which is the operating budget, and then we have a Q and A that'll come out, which will address this specifically, but I'll read. That 2% is something that we learned, I think we went through Sandy and that tragedy where we had a lot of things to deal with, and we weren't at the level that we needed to be. So as I said in the past, like that was something that the board felt was important to build that up, so that that wouldn't happen again, or at least we'd be best positioned to address it within the boundaries of the regulation. And we are allowed to carry 2%.
But still, you recommend an amount that you should.
And they recommend that you do, because you sometimes have, what I hear people call rainy day funds, but yeah, they're, I think they're really mentioning like leaky roofs on rainy day, but that's one of the things you could use that 2% for. use that 2 percent for. You could also use the 2 percent for a student from out of district that moves in, that may be a high-cost student that you didn't budget for. So it might be 100, 200, 300. I mean, and it also allows us that, heaven forbid, that the projection of the charter schools is below what is actual, right? Because that happened to us also and we had to ground around another 200,000. This could offset that change.
And the other pockets of money are for these facilities upgrades that are needed.
Correct. We have two other reserves. Maintenance would be for major roof repairs or replacement really, to maintain a facility in its proper form. So that would be our maintenance. And so we have a healthy position there, so in the event we do have something cave in or something, you know, is damaged or we'll have that reserve. And the capital projects is extremely important because part of the antiquated and facility needs of the district happen to be the stadium project from the past, so we've been talking about that for two years. And we'll be using that capital projects to offset that program. So that's what we use it for. So what's good about it is not only do we deposit, but we're going to be taking out and transferring money to into some project accounts to do some of those much-needed, especially the stadium. So that's what we have them for.
Anybody else?
Again, sorry, but again, because I'm really concrete today. What percentage of this increase is due to the increase enrollment at Ola?
Back to the beginning.
Yeah. I could give you the amount. The adjustment that's, the enrollment adjustment is $725,000.
Which is equivalent to like 1.6 percent.
Yeah, 1.7.
1.7. Okay, so that's the number. 1.7 of our increase of the 3.6 is due to the increase enrollment of Ola.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Beon. Yes, thank you. Mr. Moffett, if we're breaking down, now I'm talking about the overall budget of $69 million, not just the tax levy.
Okay.
If we're breaking it down, how much, and possibly you don't know this yet, and I'm pretty sure you do, how many millions of dollars are going to the three charter schools in town? 12 million?
No, the overall tax, yeah.
No, not the overall, I'm looking at the 69 million.
No, the taxes support that. So the amount of money that goes out to the various charter schools, which we have three major, it's about 9.2 million.
9.2 million. And then for our early childhood programming, it's how much?
It's around 12 million.
12 million. So you're looking at $21 million where the district is left with about $48 million, correct? And what would you say, Dr. Johnson, you might know this, how much of that money goes to educate special needs students? Do you know at the top?
I'm not really sure what you're asking. I want to answer it for you, but can you do it one more time?
We have to educate, of course, all special needs students that come through our district.
Oh, you mean within that charter school budget?
No, I'm not talking about the charter school. I'm talking about our district budget of $48 million. How much of that goes to educate special needs students?
Our special ed budget, do you have the line item with you?
Yeah, I don't. I can, because it's in various different locations, because you have to remember it's tuition, it's extraordinary services, it's related services, it's transportation and other items. So I'd have to just get that all together for you.
The next six weeks we could talk about. Okay, great. Thank you.
And the other thing that's really important for the board to know, because I think sometimes, just in general, Board of Educations don't realize this, but when you're putting a budget together for one particular year and you know that you are seeing over the last few years growth in your special education population, let's say we can unequivocally say that, you can only budget for what you have. You are not allowed to budget for students that you are projecting to possibly come onto the scene. So in other words, if one year we get hit with three new students that move into the district that are already in out-of-district placements and we didn't have them budgeted, it's our responsibility to take that on. The following year, the urge or the inclination on the part of the district would be, you know, well, if this happens again, we're going to be put behind the eight ball, so maybe we can, maybe we could budget a little bit of a fund to be able to do that. You can't, because when you submit your budget to the county office, you have to justify every student that's there. So in a district like Hoboken, the very interesting thing is a lot of our monies that we are not allowed to budget for are monies that are coming out of the Division of Children and Families, where children are moving in and out of homeless situations or are being placed in foster care situations that we are then required to and responsible for transporting and potentially educating in other districts. So unfortunately, you can't plan for that particular rainy day fund. It has to come out of your general operating budget. So it's just important to know.
And it just actually made me think of some follow-up questions. I'm sorry. Mr. Moffett, feel free to jump in. The charter school allocation of 9.2 million, how much did that, it was 8.9 last year?
8.6.
8.6.
Yeah, 8.6.
And then our preschool went up from, it's 12.1.
I'm sorry, what school?
The preschool students, early childhood.
Yeah, I think it went up, I want to say off the top of my head, about $160,000 in total.
160,000.
Point to point.
Now the district budget is at 48 or 49 million. How much was it at last year?
If you're saying back all that out, yeah, I have to do the numbers, but I don't know.
The question was, again, if we break down and we eliminate early childhood funding and charter funding, we're left with about 48, 49 million in the budget you proposed tonight.
Right.
How much did we have last year if we take out early childhood and charter school funding?
You're talking about just the tax levy?
No, I'm not talking about the tax levy. I'm talking about the overall budget.
Just taking those two things.
Correct.
Actually, you're trying to get to a point. What's the point you're trying to get at?
I'm trying to figure out the differences between the numbers.
But you're trying to figure it out for a reason. So why don't you say what the point you're trying to get at?
So I just want to know what our increase was at the district level in this year's budget compared to last year's budget.
Yeah, I could get that to you, but let me just mention, because, just trying to follow your line of questioning. You have to be careful, because you're mixing two different sources of funds, okay? So the preschool is a self-contained program that's funded majority by the Department of Education in what they call restricted aid. So it's basically, they approve a budget, we blend in the piece that Dr. Gold mentioned, which is our tax levy portion of that that covers special ed students, and that pays for the program. Any increases in enrollment, the department after approval will increase your budget. So that roughly was an increase of about 160,000 from year to year. So that's totally different than what I consider an operating budget item, which would be the charter school item. And that would be from, the difference would be.
600,000 or 500,000?
The difference is 629,000 is the increase.
629,000. Okay, and I guess I'm asking what the difference is of the remaining budget. I'm asking the $49 million that we're proposing this year in the remaining budget, how much was that last year? If you removed early childhood funding and charter funding last year, how much was our remaining funding?
I'd have to calculate that out, yeah.
Where'd you get 49? The tax levy is.
He said it's 70 million budget. He said it was $12 million for early childhood funding and $9 million for charter schools.
But the charter schools in the tax levy, which is 42.
But I'm looking at the overall budget, $69 million. That's what I'm looking at. If you remove early childhood funding and charter funding, you take away $21 million and we're left with, excuse me, $47 million.
This was last year's.
Right, but that's still, that's still tax levy and any extraordinary aid we get.
I'm talking about the overall budget.
It's true, you're talking about, but those two things are funded by two sources, the tax levy and the stadium.
Right.
Mr. Beon Demonic, I think I can help. This was last year's 2015, 2016 budget. You're trying to get at a number that is not clearly presented here, but if I look at the numbers, the year, like last year, the preschool budget was $12,131,000. This year it's $12,313,000, so that's the difference. And last year's charter school costs were $9 million. This was before adjustment, so it was what last year's budget was, $9,190,000. It's now $9,273,000.
Okay.
So if you add up those numbers from your other numbers, it's.
And the total budget last year was 67 million, correct?
That's 67,991.
Okay. So then we're going to subtract those two numbers. So in essence, what I wanted to get at, and I think you just answered it, was there's not a big difference remaining, what was remaining last year compared to what was remaining this, what is being proposed this year? That would seem to be correct.
Thank you.
Hey, so I just wanted to clarify. You want to go?
No, it's on a different issue, so no.
So I guess we can all come at it at different ways, right? So one of the ways that I look at it is, or if we want to say that we have a total budget of 69 million, but, so if you take out the $42 million of tax levy and take out the $12 million of pre-K, that leaves 15 million. And that to me, I think, is the aid that we receive for English language learners, special needs, and for socioeconomic impact. That's how I understand it, right? So the budget can increase, not because we increased it, but because the state maybe gave us more money for pre-K or the state gave us more money because we have additional children with special needs or additional. The reason I brought up the charter schools is because that's, and the tax levy is because that's the number that we can control, right? The only number that we can say can go up or down is the tax levy. And the charter schools are paid almost 100 percent from tax levy, because they don't get that other state aid if they don't have children with special needs or English language learners or based on socioeconomic. So if the budget would go up, it could go up to 100 million if the state all of a sudden gave us extra money for, you know, that 15 million is what the state gives up. That's what I was trying to say to you, Peter, that there's two different funding sources. The tax levy we control is based on our district and the other three districts. The state portion that comes in that we receive, we receive for a reason and we don't control if that goes up or down.
Right. And I understand that, and I think we were talking about two separate things.
Maybe, yeah.
Tom.
Mr. Madigan.
Now, this question is only for my help, not going after you, Tom. I just want to get my head wrapped around.
Okay, I'm ready.
You were founder of Allegiant Charter, right?
Yes.
Did you start it with eight grades or did you start at the first grade and move up a year, every year?
I think we started K through two.
And then moved up? And Hoboken Charter was the same exact time, correct? Or?
They were granted their charter in the same year.
Okay.
Chose a planning year and opened the.
Okay, so every year we went through the same thing that we're going, like, and then as, now this might not be, I'm not trying to put you in any spot, I'm just trying to get my head around, like Mr. Leon's asking about with the sole or how many we're getting because they're going to the eighth grade this year. So we went through this twice with two different charter schools and it was the same probably thing, same where each year the taxes went up or how much we, the Board of Ed, before any of us won, none of us were here, it went up every year, money going to the charter schools back then.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, just so I grab my head, we've gone through this twice.
But you know what the real question is, Duncan?
What is? I just asked the real question.
The real question is, what was the charter given for?
No, it wasn't.
What were the grades for?
What? What was what?
Was it originally charter for one through eight?
No, it was one to second and then they moved up.
The charter was for K through eight. They granted K through eight and started as a, it was always part of the charter.
But every year it went up and more money came out from the Hoboken Board, correct? That's all. I'm not trying to get you out of context.
No, 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 you are, Tom. No secrets there.
Don't tell me what I'm trying to do with Leon. Leon, you're the one who's bringing up these numbers. I'm asking a question that, did this go on before? It is no gotcha, and that's why I put it out there at the top. He was there and I'm just asking him for his history.
The numbers were significantly smaller then, but they were numbers.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, this is a long before, this ain't the first.
And it, you know, there are people who didn't like to see that then.
Yeah, I was, I didn't, that's why I'm asking. I'm asking you, was it the same type of thing that we're going through now as a Board?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's all. That's all nothing, as I said, I told you before.
I just, I wanted to point out though, at that time, until only a couple of years ago, it was told to us and the public that the money came directly from the state to the charter schools. It was only told to us recently that the money actually came from our budget, from the tax levy, which was maybe what, three or four years ago, where we were then understood that the money came from our students and went out to the charter schools. It was never, it was recently, before that, they, it was told to us that the money came separately from the state to them, which would be a very different situation.
Well, that may have been what people were told, but it was never true.
That is absolutely correct.
But both ways, it's coming out of Hoboken tax base.
Absolutely.
That's both ways. No matter what, back then, where 111 years, it's still coming out of Hoboken tax base.
That was always the law.
Right, which is what I wanted people to understand.
Thank you.
Right, this increase for the 3.65 is for all four districts, not just for our district.
No.
If I can, not to go back, but I backed out those numbers for you, because I had to do the calculation, the net number. So I took the total for both years, backed out preschool aid and the charter school, right?
Correct.
And then I subtracted that from the overall. So it was 46.6 million against a 48.4 million. So if you look at the increase, it's 1.7 from year to year.
1.7 million.
Yes.
Now we're at, okay. That's exactly what I'm thinking of. Thank you.
For new board members, in years past, we've had small sort of board committee sessions with the superintendent and with the business administrator to just ask questions as we think about this and as you get input from the public possibly over the next several weeks. I assume Mr. Moffett will be doing that again this year?
Absolutely, yes.
Of course, we have to keep it to, you know, three or four board members at a time. So we'll work out a schedule for that to everyone's convenience, but that's normal. And again, we welcome questions from the public. Did I understand, Mr. Moffett, you're putting the other question and answer?
Yeah, I do a Q and A. Yeah, I do a Q and A and make that available. Once the Department of Ed, Hudson County approves it, then we're allowed to advertise all that information. So then I finalize the Q and A. I have roughly 25 questions that I do that are standard. Obviously, I update the presentation and that's all available at that buildup period for the budget hearing.
And I'm familiar with seeing sort of thicker line-by-line budgets.
Well, it's all digitized, so.
That's all available to board members now.
Absolutely, yep. Yep, if you want to come in, I can go over the whole thing with anybody.
Any other comments or questions at this stage?
I think I just had one question. I think in years past, we've had an email address that people can send emails to, emails to if they have questions. Do we have that again?
Yes, it's budget@hoboken.k12 nj.us.
It's on the website?
Yes, it is. I verified that after I spoke to a reporter out in the audience.
Okay.
Now comes time for a rhetorical question. Mr. Moffett, are there any people signed up to speak?
Tom, this is just on this part, not do you have anything else on the agenda? Questions that we're asking correctly now or no?
Public comment?
No.
Yeah, okay. Now, what we do is I'm going to ask for a motion on the consent agenda. Once I have that and it's second, we can open it up for discussion.
Okay.
There we go. So with no public comment, I ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second.
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 I'd like to pull something on the agenda.
And now I open it up for discussion. Mr. Madigan.
All right, and I don't know what I could talk out, this is my first time seeing bills and claims reports, because we received this at a late date, and I know you're busy with the budget, Mr. Moffett, so, but I have questions on some of the things, can I read out them? Am I allowed to read these out in public? Like, I wanted to question, if we go to page, well, I don't know if anyone has the vendor list, on page 10, there's a bill for Maris High School, repairers' class, for $749, can I, I don't, there's, what's that for?
Well, I'd have to pull all this for you, yeah.
Yeah, is there way, because I don't want to vote on, I don't know why we're paying for something in Maris High School. I don't want to vote to pay.
Well, you've got to understand that, these are bills, right, so these are approved already by purchase order.
Okay.
And they're valid financial claims.
Okay.
That the district must meet.
Okay.
Or risk falling behind on our accounts. So I would recommend that maybe you consider voting in the affirmative tonight on those, and if you would like to come up to my office and I can go over, I'll pull all these records, because you have to understand these are packages.
Okay.
And if you have a detailed question related to one of the items, we can go over it. It may or may not answer your question.
Yeah.
Because the payment package will include like purchase order, an invoice, a voucher, assigned voucher, and those type of items, so...
Like my question, I'm sorry.
No, but if you ask other specific questions outside of the financial piece, then I might not be able to answer it quickly, I might have to make a phone call to the individual because as a purchase order is created, it could be, in this case, the athletic department could be doing this, and I would have to then make that phone call.
But like I said, my concern is we're paying for a class in a Catholic school in another town, and there's no backup, like, for me, so I don't know what happened that we would have to pay.
Yeah, I mean, I am familiar with this, and I don't want to misspeak, and I'm going to give you that caveat, but I'm going to suggest to you that I think there was some damage by one of our students, and it was an accidental damage, and it had to do with going through a paint glass trophy case.
Oh, really?
And we, as a district, reimbursed them for that.
And we're definitely on...
But I would have to do some research.
Are we definitely on the accidental?
Say again?
Is it definitely an accident, was it?
Yes, oh, yeah, I discussed this, yep.
That's all I need to know, that.
Yep, when it came through, it was...
We're not paying some parents' bill if someone did something, and that's why. And, and I guess, Nick, usually does this come out earlier?
No, let me just go over that. We have a board meeting, so the way we pay our bills, it's a once a month. A lot of other districts have two bill lists because they have two meetings a month. We have the one, and it kind of stretches our timeline out, right? So we add another 15, maybe 30 days on our cycle. So we had a very large, what I call the monthly bill list, earlier in this month. When we were in finance committee, I told them of our need to continue to pay bills, so I had asked, and they supported, doing a, what I call a short bill list at the next board meeting to catch up on some of those bills. So that's what you're seeing, it's about roughly $180. We'd like to keep our currents open and actually up to date. And that's also related to the live item that I did write to board that we'll be talking about shortly, too.
Yeah, which, I understand that live item, but there's like, like I said, this is the first time I'm seeing bills and claims and some board member, I figured it out. Like, we have three different athletic bills for buying equipment, and I don't know where the equipment went to, and not that, it's not somewhere in the purchase orders, but I'd like to see that before I voted on that, where the money was spent. Is that possible for me in the next meeting, or no?
We could discuss it with the superintendent, but if you ever have questions in regard to what you see, you could either bring it up with the finance...
But usually, we'll have this earlier, I know you've been busy with the budget.
No, no, I'm just trying to explain to you the procedure. You should see them on every meeting, regular meeting, you'll have bill lists, and if it's not, I usually discuss it with the finance committee. But part of the procedure is if you have any questions, you make sure you discuss it either with the superintendent or the chair of the finance committee, and what I do is I'll bring every, all that information, everything that you request to that meeting, so that that committee could then answer your question. And if they feel that it's needed that I provide additional detail, I often will then respond and either have you in and we can go through all the backup.
Yeah, I have no problem.
But that is a little bit of time, I have to...
Just because you were busy maybe with the other thing, I'm not saying that you're speaking, and I'm just saying that we get it, we usually get it earlier than the night before or today, you know? So I could look into the questions, I would have enabled a call today earlier if I was busy, like, if we had it, usually we receive it on a Thursday before the Tuesday meeting or Friday, so I'd have time to call one of yous and ask you, but this one, we just received, which we missed that today, so that's all I'm asking.
Yep.
Any other comments? Mr. Biancamano.
Mr. Moffett, in that, back and forth, I wasn't sure, because you emailed us earlier yesterday about this live item that you want, it's not on the agenda tonight, though, correct?
It's considered a live item. So what we've done in the past is, and what I did is I, again, you're asking me, so what I do is I ask the superintendent if it's something that I could list on the agenda, she agreed, I then discussed it with the president of the board, who I said there would be a live item, received support there and decided to send an email to let sure, make sure everybody knew about it, and then was going to walk in and basically talk to you about it tonight. I'm not sure this is the point you want to talk about, but we can.
That was the next...
But yeah, that's the logic.
Oh, so we're not voting on that right now? We're just voting on these four items on the agenda, 5.01 to 5.04.
Okay, well, I, that's correct.
That's what's on the floor right now.
That's what's on the floor, but then we're going to discuss the live, okay, that's what I was just...
Yes, 5.05 will be the live item.
Okay, and then, just for a point of clarification, on 5.01, when you say the superintendent and business administrator presented to the finance committee and other members of the Board of Education a recommended, look, you mean you're presenting that now, right? That wasn't presented before now, correct?
Right, this is a common, yeah, resolution, like it's written, it's usually a format that the department looks for, they look for certain things like the tax levy and the overall budget, they also look for that terminology.
I got you, I wasn't sure if you met at home that you presented it...
No, we discussed, we discussed the budget pretty regularly at the finance committee.
Okay, thank you.
Nothing further. One more comment on the claims and bills, just as a basketball official who has worked around Hoboken before, we have a bad reputation over the years before you came, Mr. Moffett, so this ain't trying, just about officials who come and do the games here, either football, basketball, swimming, baseball, and now we'll have a, but being paid on is highly mad, like sometimes, like I see some of the claims are from January games, now we're in March. Last year, I think I worked a game in December, and I was paid close to March. Some guys say to you, you don't want to come here, you fight parking, you fight things, and then, I could go somewhere else, some places pay you a check, some athletic directors have a checking account, and some pay you a week later, or whatever, but just if we could look into something in that issue, I don't know if we can, and it was before you...
Well, Mr. Madigan, I think you're going to be happy to hear Mr. Moffett's response.
On the one hand, he could pay...
Well, that's why you see tonight's bill list, because we wanted to catch up on some accounts that we knew we were behind, so that's why a lot of them are being paid. We continue to be working on another bill list, we're hoping that's what that live item will help us with, because we'd like to get another group out right before the break, because of the holiday break. The other thing I'd like to talk to you about, too, is that we did review the process of how officials get paid, and we did make a little change on a voucher document recently, so that should make that turnover cycle a little bit faster. I will say that this is an area that a lot of districts have and public agencies have had issues with, because as an official, and you get over $500, we need to 1099 you. So apparently, before I came into the district, there was a finding that we needed to tweak that up, and therefore had to do purchase order individually and make sure that for an individual like yourself who might make over 500, that we 1099 you, because it's part of the IRS regulation, so that's a part of that, so, but to get back to your point, yeah, that's why you see that.
And we're not the only schools outstanding, we're two other districts that owe me from the season, so, well, not only Sayafar's district, there were two other school districts that owe me still this year, so just so you know.
All right, any other comments or questions on the consent agenda? If not, Mr. Moffett, you call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Biancamano?
Yes, on introduction.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Dr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Madigan?
This is only on 5.01.
5.01 through 5.04.
Okay, yes, on introduction on that, but on 5.02, I want to say no, just at this point, because there was some backups I wish I would have been able to see.
And yes, on all those, right?
Yes.
Ms. Montgomery?
Yes.
Ms. Solov?
Yes.
Ms. Stromwall? Oops, excuse me, sorry, she's absent due to illness. And Mr. Cluffell?
Yes. Now, I believe we have a live item.
Right.
Mr. Moffett?
Yes, I'll read that in to the record. The live item will read, approval of payments of bills between meetings, resolve that the Hoboken Board of Education appoints the business administrator as claims auditor to verify and pay bills as needed to protect the interests of the board between meetings, and with advice and consent of the chairperson of the finance committee and/or board president, which will be listed as paid at the next regular board meeting.
Mr. Moffett?
So it'll give me the ability, I end up being the claims agent, so I review the bill list, based on my signature, they'll go out the door, and they'll be presented at the next board meeting in April as a confirming item on the bills and warrants.
Only in April, though, not for future board meetings? You're going to go back to the same system after April?
No, 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 it's just to get us to the next meeting, so we're going to pay bills to the next meeting, and then you wouldn't have this...
I'm a little confused, this is for every meeting, you'll be able to approve.
That's what I thought, that's what I was asking.
Okay, what this is saying is that you'll be able to approve with the board president, the head of the finance committee invoices, so they don't have to wait to get paid.
Right.
Okay, so it's not just for one month, it's continued?
Well, I could, I only want it for one month, so I can make it read that way, because we're going to get back on the regular cycle. This is just to get in between cycles.
Now, again, I guess today is the day to confuse Leon. If you're going to do it...
I'm confused, too.
You might as well have the right to always do it.
Okay.
No? Sure glad we're having this conversation, how would you like it?
Let's leave it as it is, let the business...
So this is just for one month?
Let the business administrator get the bills back on track, I would prefer that we, once it is back on track in April, that we put it back to the system where we holistically, as a board, can review everything, and we'll move forward that way, but for right now, in the meantime, let's, okay, so my recommendation is to keep a check and balance system in place between our operations, just in general, I think it's probably our prudent upon our responsibilities and our duties, so, but at this time, in this month, let's allow the business office to get back on track, pay the bills that they have to, and then we'll start over in April.
Assuming that we pass this and it's on track, if I was a vendor and I submitted an invoice to Hoboken Public Schools, and let's say it's not for a huge contract where, you know, let's say it's within $5,000, whatever the number is, how long should I expect to get paid? When, a month, six weeks, two months?
Yeah, I'll come in and answer, yeah, at least 60 days, it depends on a lot of things as far as like an invoice, but I normally will say 60 days.
But again, my concern is if we miss the school board meeting, it could be 90 days.
That's right.
That's true.
But if it's a small bill, where one trusts the superintendent, the board president, or the head of the finance committee, it would be nice to pay the bill, you know, a month earlier if it can be done.
If I can make a recommendation at this time, maybe that resolution could be considered at the finance committee level at next meeting, and maybe we can discuss it there and decide at that level if it's something we want to advance.